My name is Selahun, it's meeting of 2020.
Yay!
Please join us in salute to the followers.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to their public, for which they stand one nation, under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up for appointments is fire chief Grant Carroll to discuss warrant articles.
Yes.
So, I have two warrant articles looking to go on the ballot this year in March. The first one is for capital reserve. We've done it every year for the last 15 years. It failed last year, which is going to push a truck or two out, which is fine. Our replacement schedule was 20 years roughly on average. Now it's a little bit longer because they're making trucks better. Had a couple issues with trucks and repairs this year, but all in all, not a bad year. So, just the same, $85,000 for that. And then the second one, well, two actually, that Cindy drafted for me, with me. I believe you have a copy of them with you, Article 3 and 4. Basically to close the existing ambulance fund, which was voted in in 1999. That fund is a 31 colon debt, 31 colon 95 dash C, which is not a revolving fund. And that fund will only go to replacement on the ambulance. So, it can't go to supplies, it can't go to anything but the actual vehicle replacement. Speaking with other towns, like this year, the motherboards in our life pack 15s are unreplaceable. I guess moving forward, it's probably like an Apple iPhone where they change the cord every couple of years. So, it just costs you more money. This year, they ran a special where you could buy one life pack and get the other one free. So, that's a $30,000.
Someone's zooming in and has not a, is not a view.
I just figured it hurts.
So, not having that in my budget, I obviously couldn't take advantage of that deal. As of September 3rd of this year, Cindy said that we had $226,999.63 in that account. So, this will, if Article 3 and 4 pass, that will allow us, me to come to your board to expend money of that fund instead of a vote of the people, it would be a vote of the selectmen. And that will also make it that we can use it for like ALS agreements with extra hospital and not just replacement of the vehicle itself, but replacement of equipment and supplies. So, hopefully that will also help offset the budget in coming years as well. So, I ask for your support and if you guys would be willing to put that on the ballot.
Does the $226 plus $1,000, does this possibly move that into the 95?
Yes, so it closes the current fund, puts the.
It transfers the.
Way DRA, things are doing, we all went through this with like the dump fund and all that good stuff. Closes the current fund, puts it into the general fund, then Article 4 takes it out.
Other general funds.
Puts it into a revolving fund. If either, she's gonna check on that today, but if either one, if either one fails, neither of them pass. But I need to make sure that if either one fails, that that fund remains the same as it stands today.
Let's say three fails, but four passes, can we establish the fund for new monies in 2021?
I can ask that, I'm not sure.
That would be a good one to know about because let's say they didn't want to close it and transfer, but then is that to keep us from collecting and starting a newer fund? And then in a subsequent year, go to the voters again next year, let's say, to move that money over.
The only, I guess that's a good DRA, Cindy question, the only issue I see with that is that back in 1999, they voted to put all the non-resident billing.
I see what you're saying.
In that account. I just want to clarify that this account is only for non-resident billing. So, resident billing that we collect from insurance companies and whatever goes back into the general fund. Non-resident billing goes into here to help fund the ambulance.
Where does that go currently? Or does non-resident billing go now?
Non-resident goes into the established ambulance fund.
Okay.
And then resident billing goes into the general fund.
I don't have a problem endorsing it as from the board of selectmen. Either 3 and or 4. I'd say we should put, I would support both of those articles as selectmen warrant articles because it makes fiscal sense to do so.
I think basically, Grant, what I'll be looking for afterwards is a motion from you folks to go ahead and put those in as selectmen's warrant articles. If you don't make that decision, and Grant is more, you petition warrant article.
Right.
You approve, so you folks have to actually, if it doesn't happen tonight, the long way away.
But then do it right now. I move that Article 3 and Article 4, as proposed by Chief Pellet, be put in the warrant as selectmen's warrant articles.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion in the second, further discussion. I guess the only thing I would bring up is I think the expenditure funds should be a publicly noticed hearing.
It would be a public meeting just like this.
Right, and I think it should be a public notice hearing that goes out so people can weigh in on the expenditure of those funds. That would be the only amendment that I would make.
So, you want to make an amendment to Article 3 and 4?
No, it would be out of Article 4.
Article 4, so where the legislative body expends it, it would, after public notice of set expenditure, because I think people should be allowed to weigh in on that. So, if you find some new shiny stretcher thing that costs 1.2 million dollars and you really want it, people should be able to, a lot of them, voice their concerns or support.
You made your motion.
Yeah, yeah, I'm ready to just find if I know what to insert. The phrase is after public notice of proposed expenditures.
Sure.
Okay, and then.
So, Article 4 down to the bottom where it says, "Town treasurer shall have custody of all monies in the fund and shall pay out the same only upon the order of the governing body following."
Such funds may be expended only for the purpose of which the fund was created after a public hearing.
If it voted in that way tonight, I will talk to Cindy.
After a public hearing. Did you see that, Susan?
After which the fund was created, say after.
Notes, such funds may be expended only for the purpose of which the fund was created only after a public.
And only after a public hearing.
And the next to the last sentence.
Yeah.
Okay, there's the last line, only after a public hearing. Good, that should take care of that, that makes sense. Chief, 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 my chief, I have a chief.
Sounds good. Good with that. Second, that's it?
That works.
Okay.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Palacio?
Yes.
Koons?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes. You sort of heard one of them?
What?
But you are a law.
A life pack exception. So, I'm new here, but does the capital reserve account request for funds? Is that warrant, the vote that you guys vote?
Well, they both go, they both go hand in hand, right?
No, no, this is the capital, this is the $85,000 for capital, capital reserve fund for fire.
Article 7.
Article 7, okay, yeah. I thought you were talking about Article 3.
I don't recall that.
And you guys, you're even need to vote to put it in as a selectman warrant, a selectman's article or he needs to.
I move that, that Article 7, when it goes in as a selectman's warrant article, as printed.
Second.
Seven. 3 and 4 we just voted on. Article 7 is their capital reserve fund, fire apparatus, capital reserve fund. So, the fire fund has 3 articles, 3, 4, and 7.
Yes.
That's it, 3.
Okay, motion in the second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Palacio?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Koons?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
All my stuff right now, okay.
So fast, anything else you want to say?
That's it.
See, it said yes, you vote.
This is water piping from, is that from where? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, the road agent Rich Stane, later, also discussing warrant articles.
So, I guess you guys have a list, I don't know which one I can use first, but the first one that comes to mind is the capital reserve for highway traffic replacement, equipment replacement. Last year, we did $100,000. It was passed, it's a warrant article that's been pretty much sponsored by the selectmen for the last 20 years. Article 9. So, should be to replace highway equipment for $100,000. Looking for you guys to support that, if not, obviously I'll do the walk around, I get 25 signatures and put it on as petition warrant article.
Who, Article 9 goes forward as a selectman's warrant article?
Second. Okay, we've got a motion in the second, further discussion? Here it is, roll call, please.
Palacio?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Koons?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Second one would be building maintenance, can I have?
Right above.
It's Article 8 and it, you have two sounds on there. One says $50,000, the other says $80,000. To place in the previously established town buildings, maintenance and repairs capital reserve fund.
So, normally, you know, the last four, five, six years, you've been putting $50,000 in that one and different projects come out of it as they come up that one budgeted for the previous budget cycle. Last big project being the Nichols Building, all that makes the rework, I think mostly came out of that one. That fund.
I thought that was a separate.
You're right, it was, no, it was a separate warrant article, but the money came out of existing monies.
We just want the people to see how that fits, right?
Yep. So, then the reason why there's two numbers there, if you remember, a few weeks ago, I was in here, we talked about the water line from the new fire station. Just probably spent the water to this building and the Nichols Building. It's a rough estimate of $80,000 to put the water pipeline in, that's to have an outside contractor come in, takes care of material and labor. That is not in my budget anyways, it is not in the new fire station budget anyways. It could come out of that fund, it could be a separate warrant article if that's what you want. However, I don't recommend that you do that because a no vote means it can't happen anyway, any way, shape, or form. It really should be worked into the budget because it's a necessity. It's not a cheap, nice thing to have, it's fire suppression for the town hall. And if for some reason, we're hooked up now, which we all am almost to sale, into a purchase and sales agreement, if that switch gets shut off, you don't get to have your meetings here at the fire, at the town hall anymore. The town hall will be closed by the fire marshal's office.
Well, I think we'll take it to $80,000. And I don't know if anybody's looking at this tax rate impact sheet, but at $50,000, it's .06 cost per taxpayer. So, you figure at 80, it's going to go to .08. And I think this sheet's going to actually help things pass because people are going to throw us how little some of these things are costing. But I think I'm fine with the 80 and doing that as a selectmen's.
Just as a point of information, if we, we voted X amount of dollars to build a fire station out of the dump line for the purpose of something like this, that was supposed to be part of that building?
With the sprinkler system? I didn't think so, I thought all they were going to do is make the system big enough to handle it, the water's.
Well, I thought, I thought that sprinkler system, doesn't that encompass all of the pipes that run to that?
That's what this is for, is piping it to the buildings.
You can't change horses now, guys. Consistently for the last eight months to a year, this has been a standalone away from the fire. Because it's not necessary, this pipeline from this building over to that building is not a necessity for the fire station.
Correct.
And to all the people, this is how much money we needed to do at the fire station.
But we've been talking about, we knew that when that happens and when this gets sold, we need to do something with the sprinklers for the rest of the town buildings.
Right.
So, because that is feeding this and that building, I mean, it's just a possibility that we take those funds from that account and not have to go to the taxpayer.
Take it from what account?
Limping.
But we've already, we've already said how much we're taking from that, so we can't increase that account. We have to have a public hearing.
Hold a public hearing and you'd hold, you'd do a warrant article.
Why are you opposed to asking the voters for $80,000 to sprinkle the town hall?
I'm sorry.
Why are you opposed to asking the voters for this?
Why not? I think we should ask the voters.
Okay, then I think, I like the way this article's wording, because it doesn't say specifically the purpose of the expenditure.
Exactly.
And, and.
If you get a no vote, you still.
You're still getting.
It's a necessity to kind of look at existing.
But the point I was trying to make was rather than take it from the taxpayers, take it from a fund that we already have. That's the point I was making.
Mine is all, it all comes from the taxpayers.
And you know what? If we get it and we have other monies available next fall for the tactic, we drop the rate again. And that would be just as good, to be quite honest with you. So, I think we go for it, I think we should ask, this is what we need to do.
That has, that has a very big impact because if you don't have sprinklers in these buildings, we don't operate.
But not specify what this is for, we can go back and do it how you're saying, if this gets voted down.
You still can take it out of you.
We're not, we're not saying what we're using.
Even, even if this passes, you can still, next year, whatever, try to get out of the dump. At least then you'll have that money set aside in case they say no.
Well, I think it's clarified that we don't need to go to warrant article to take money out of that fund.
Right.
We have to have a public hearing, but we don't have to go to warrant article. I would like to clarify, and I would like this in a minute, that it's just for this building and that building, correct?
Yeah. And the fire hydrant across the street and the fire hydrant between here and the school.
And that's it?
It's not for anything else out of the town property.
Okay.
But doesn't that line that feeds from the school, that picks up that fire plug, also pick up the church?
It might, we might have to close that fire plug. Might have to pull it out of the ground or leave it there and it'd be fed from my school.
I'd let it be on, if they're going to stay there, let that block go to the church, right?
But the one across the street here will stay.
But the ship is leaving port now.
And that issue, yes.
We've reached out enough times, this is all we're doing, right?
Okay with that.
Is everybody okay with it?
Yes, if you, what's in that fund right now, building maintenance?
I don't, Rachel.
Got a guess? Is it $10 or $200,000?
At least $150,000.
That's another reason I would support the $80,000. Because even if we did this from something else, something we have to think about is that, well, the furnace is here, the air conditioner's here, the furnace downstairs, the boiler over at the library, boiler with the library is needed to be done for probably five years. But these systems are all getting old enough that they're going to be needing to be done in the near future, at least in the next two or three, four years. So, getting that fund up a little bit wouldn't be a bad idea.
So, there's a motion in the floor, right?
I'll make a motion on number 8 that we make it $80,000 in a selectman warrant article.
So, 87?
Hmm, 80.
87.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion in the second, further discussion? Here it is, roll call, please.
Palacio?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Koons?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
So, the third one, and then I, again, I don't have to list.
It's number 10, administrative secretary?
Administrative, administrative assistant, administrative secretary, office manager, whatever you want to call that person. Looking for you folks to, again, support it, vote for it. If I have to do a warrant article, I will, I mean petition warrant article, I will. I will say, a few weeks ago, I was listening for the conversation, I was in the room about supporting this at $15 an hour. I'm not really interested in the $15 an hour person. I'll be honest with you, I don't think that's the quality person that, that, that position deserves or needs. I, we hire clerks here at the town hall for $17 an hour. I'm looking for administrative assistant. I'm looking for a Kelly Langdon type person or, you know, police department secretary, someone that can make some decisions and assist myself for the next, my replacement and be an office manager, administrative assistant, whatever you say. You're not going to find one of those people that's dependable for $15 an hour. It's just, they're just not out there, it's not real, it's not a real number. You guys talked about it, that's what you came up with. It's not a real number, so.
Actually, this is blank, there's nothing in there yet.
Well, again, I'm just going by the conversation that was had here two weeks ago.
You're looking for a more experienced person that can manage the offices you're right on.
Absolutely.
And you got bids, follow-up, stormwater reports.
Absolutely.
You need some technical skills in here and ability to mic, to multitask. Can I suggest we put in for $20 per hour, but start out at 18 with a 60-day period and then if all goes well, you move on from there? You're going to know fairly quickly if the person's the right one for the job.
That, that to me sounds like a better solution than $15 an hour because I don't need someone that's going to be doing their nails and, or male, female, I can't.
Get be careful.
Can't be sexist, I'm sorry, that was a sexist statement. Although I've seen guys do their nails. I'm just, I'm looking for your support, I'm telling you what I really think the department needs, obviously it's your decision. Some help is better, you know, having a person there 30, 32 hours to be back in the first year is a positive thing. My intention is to make this a full-time position so you can.
Well, 32 hours is full-time with benefits.
I think we, I think you guys talked about 30 hours.
Cindy told me today, because I asked her that, she said 35 is full-time.
Oh, very.
Yeah, because I was told it was 30 now, and she said, no, it's 35 to.
See, I thought it was 30.
To get retired and, and everything, so depends on what state. If you're with the Obama cash standards, it's $30 an hour. I don't know where she got 35 from, but I don't know. Well, I don't have that answer. You mentioned stormwater and we had talked about an enforcement person that was going to probably do stormwater, but if you're putting in that person, then I think, you know, your hours are right, your pace right, and that we ought to really reconsider enforcement hours that we talked about going for a 40-hour person. Drop that down because I don't think people will pass two full-time people. And I'd rather see Rich get this person, drop the enforcement down to, like we talked about the first time, 12, 15 hours or something like that.
Well.
Possibly roll it into, combined with building inspector at a later date.
Okay, so let's, let's go with the money on this one here.
Well, that's what I'm saying is that I'm for what he's saying to do going to 20 hours.
Do you have anything in your budget, we have $17,000 now, correct?
So, Kevin and the budget committee came up with a number, I don't know what that number is. Chuck Hart and Kevin, I don't, I don't know what that number is. For next year's budget, I don't know, I've not seen it. This seems to be a vacuum, again, with information not coming out.
Well, if, if we went at 22, let's for example, even though that may not be where you start up that individual, I don't know what to win that, but anyway, 22, 30 hours a week is 660, 660 a week times 52 weeks is $34,000. So, you want to put in 30, because you got benefits too, and that's another $15,000.
Depends on the plan, but yeah, the benefits package could be up to $22,000.
Well, I think to completely discount the fact that someone's getting a pension and state benefits is kind of, I mean, I understand where you're going, you don't want someone who's, you know, just there for the party, but there are the intangibles of municipal employment that come into play, I think.
Yeah.
And I would be remiss to vote on this until we put an actual number in that line.
There is, in the salaries part-time in the highway department, there's $25,000 in budget this year.
That's for.
It says add FT administrator, full-time administrator.
Isn't that for your people at Plow, those are part-time people? No, that comes into Plow.
Yeah, they get charged off the plow.
All right, so, so we need to have.
No, it's another, it's another.
I get $110,000.
$20 an hour in nine months.
For benefits?
Oh.
Because I saw what you were saying is that, let's be a.
No, I heard you saying $20 an hour, I'm sorry, but.
I, I was just thinking a number to come up with a dollar figure here, I don't expect it to start out at 22. Would have to be one crackerjack to do that.
I'm guessing that the salary part-time is for what you're paying now for Florida.
Yes. Actually, that was increased after you guys' discussion a few weeks ago. I think this year, the budget is like 60, 60,000, 800, something like that, but this year, cool, times 52.
All right, so we need.
That's probably what they came from, because that's 23, 4, and you put 25 in, 30 hours at $15 an hour.
Yep, that's what they came from.
Okay, but we have no idea what benefits are worth an hour, and I'm not really ready. All right, we're going to have to vote on this one Monday because I can't, I can't just come up. If you don't have a number to propose, I am, I'm in no position to guess what the benefit package is worth.
You're going to meet sometime this week for recumbrances anyway, so you can do it then.
Yes, you just.
I will get with Cindy and talk benefit numbers and see what it amounts to.
Okay.
Are you looking at the sheet that Cindy did make up for three different hourly rates? It's on the back of the description. Here, it's on the back of the job description for the secretary.
Does we check the clock in there?
I do have a clock.
First, I had a problem with work.
So, look at the $20 per hour, and she's giving us a valuation of 75,139, including a full benefit package?
Yep. But at nine months, which is what the warrant article is written for.
Correct, it'd be 56,354. And if $25,000 is already in the budget, that leaves you a 31,354 number. Am I correct in that?
Yep.
33, 31, 54, two ways, plus the $25,000 that's in the budget, gives you 56,534 for nine with total.
But isn't the 25 in there just as the budget over? Don't we have to put the whole?
No, because it's existing, there's an existing line at.
Okay.
The $25,000 in the budget, the whole, we improve the town.
Actually, that's right, because it's right here, it's Route 1774 in 2020.
Yep. 2021 is $25,000.
So, this article should be deferred to a resident program this summer, 31,354 for salary and benefits to be added to the $25,000 currently in the proposed highway budget.
Yep.
I move to redock that warrant article as a selectman warrant article.
Second. Okay, we'll finish that further discovered. Okay, so it's thirty-one, three fifty-four?
Correct.
We'll call it, please.
Claudio?
Yes.
Ritz?
Yes.
Coles?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
And when that passes, and I get a think positive vibes in there, I would recommend that we put someone on that they're on probationary period for sixty days and starting at eighteen, and make sure it works because not, even though they may need to be well, family skills, it may not be the right fit for your department.
Exactly.
Sixty, sixty days may be a little short.
Well, you, we can make it ninety, but my experience has been, you know, with the tools, if not less. Either works or it doesn't.
My only fear is what if you hire in a slow time of year where you're not ready to put in through a lot of?
Well, they can keep you part-time until you can get someone better. How's that sound? And maybe they'll work into the job, you never know. Sometimes people surprise you with the least expected. Do you have another one, Rich?
No, um, the only other issue I have is should have some paperwork for a couple guys for snow plowing. They're exist, existing, they're presently full-time firefighters to fill that one room we've been talking about now for a couple months. I've got Brian Galant. So there's paperwork there for him and the other guy, Pat Casey. They both work full-time for the fire department, but they're available in the fire department schedule. If one isn't available, then the other one should be put in the truck to cover that roof. The last, the first big storm we had, they both worked for me. One took the first part of the day in the storm, the other took the second part of the storm. We have the truck to keep them busy and keep them going. Hope you look at that and get approved. Pat Casey, you need to approve that one anyways because he's already worked the hours and he needs paycheck.
Was it on the manifest?
Should be paperwork in your folder. One was for a pay increase to Brian Galant from twenty-one to twenty-five. And the other one's a stat, Pat Casey, twenty-five.
Okay.
Part-time, but they only get paid when they get called in. I call them in, they plow with the truck, it's time to go home, they go home. Again, it's
That top sheet is the manifest, don't have it on the, oh, I didn't have it back again. Sorry, I'm sorry.
I wish the board said you stack of paperwork, I'm sorry.
Because she said it was, she said it was already in there.
Okay, fine.
Okay.
Do you have any opinions on whether it should be budgeted or warrant article?
Oh, frame relations.
That's coming in later under new business, but I, we're talking about warrant articles.
So I've talked to Dennis, he doesn't actually have the equipment. I've talked to another vendor that does. I gave them some parameters, there's, and I don't have the exact number. I need to do some homework with you, Susan, and the information I have, I believe is about fifty bounds. That person seemed to think five hundred dollars a pound is about right. Actually, we'll get their geo-position, get them on the GPS and state GIS system. He seemed to think that was a pretty good number.
How much was it per pound?
About five hundred, and there's about fifty of them, so that's the twenty-five thousand dollars I gave you folks a month ago. That number kinda works. It's not something you need to do all in one year if you wanna split it up and, because how the world is, like the bound with Kingston and Breville, you share the bound, Brentwood should be sharing some of the costs. And they might block you out.
But don't they have to do it anyways as well?
Well, we have to do it, and and it's just a matter of whether you wanna have, almost.
Well, let me ask you a question, Diploa Ridge. Does every town have to do this with its boundaries?
Every town has to paramulate their bounds once every seven years.
Okay.
The oldest town is responsible town for scheduling it. Other than Exeter, Exeter's obviously old, old, they're lost by fifty years or so.
Yeah.
So the Exeter-Kingston bound, Exeter is the boss. All the other bounds, the other seven towns.
Yeah.
Kingston's in control. Kingston schedules it, Kingston's supposed to make sure it happens. Both towns need to agree on the information, sign off. Generally, it's the boards of selection for both towns, and then the secretary, secretary of state, or the secretary of state needs to receive that information from both towns. Because I think you're, you're worrying about finding the secretary of state. And the action, if they wanna come after the town, the county, the government, the office, it's but you don't have to do this. You have to do the town. You have, you have to go up action, physically do the paramulation. And we're behind scheduling a lot of the towns. You could just ask for
Is it covered under, Rich? Is it under an RSA or?
Fifty-one, two, for more than adequate, yep.
And does it specifically lay out that it's our financial responsibility, or is it our responsibility to just set it up and schedule it?
It's our responsibility to set it up and schedule it, and then by doing the GI, GIS, a lot of other towns have already done this. A lot of them have. It's a matter of this board of selection notifying the board of selection at Brentwood that, hey, we're gonna do this this year. And, you know, there's eight bounds between Brentwood and Kingston from corner to corner, and the estimate's gonna be four thousand dollars. And we'd like the town of Brentwood to pick up out of that cost.
So we could reduce this amount to twenty thousand dollars and try to take care of three or, three or four towns this year, and then another twenty next year to do the balance. Correct?
Yep. Problem with doing this, like we are right now?
Yeah.
Town Brentwood has no clue that we're, we're doing this, so they might come back. We don't have made a budget anything, so we can't do anything that you do.
So then that makes even more sense to go for twenty thousand dollars and see who, who will work with us this year. And if not, we can put off who doesn't wanna work with us this year, so they can budget for next year, and then we can encounter based on a, on a proposal, correct?
I would disagree with you because I don't think it's, it behooves us to keep going back to the the town or the townspeople to say, hey, we need more money for this, we need more money for this, we need more money for this.
Okay.
I think the conversations need to take place with our neighboring towns, and we need to line them up to let them know that this is gonna be happening. We gotta come up with a schedule and just say, we're doing you this year, do this year, your next year, your next year. But they need to pay.
Okay, so what you're suggesting is?
Why can't we be eating this just for the good people of Brentwood? Or Danville, or anyone else, last though, or? Yeah.
All right, so what I hear you saying, that we should take Article twelve out for this year. Drop that to early spring after the budgets are done to let neighboring towns and say, according to RSA fifty-one colon two one thirty-two seven six, we need to paramulate our borders and what's, you know, what would you recommend, or what would you like to do? You wanna schedule us for twenty twenty-one?
I think we need to speak with our council and find out exactly what the law requires us to do. And find out from a position of strength that those people can check in. Or what's the benefit to us? Suddenly this has now is Kingston, and we're taxing that if they don't wanna pay for it, then we need to pick what lines.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that.
I I just don't think we should rush this. If someone is gonna not help, not cover their part of it, we need to know that it won't end anyway.
Then I'm gonna ask you, Susan, you make, this is, this will be reticified, but we have to follow up on after-town meetings and support your other colleagues. So you follow me? Okay.
Hell, I don't care, it's worse luck when it goes to jail on this one. Bobby?
Oliver, do it except for three.
Excuse me.
Okay.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Rich.
Sorry to take that out of order, but I had an input there.
Next call. Uh, public comment.
Is there any public comment from anyone on Zoom? I'm not seeing anybody.
Chief Galloway has public comment?
Hi, I just asked for something on, uh,
Sir, can you come up to the table and identify yourself?
Sorry, Grandpa, I need a wheel drive, Kingston, answer. Uh, just looking for update on if there's any movement on the IT bids stuff.
So there's two people reviewing it? The third, the third, we never got the information on the third. So the two are reviewing it as we speak.
Hello?
Uh, uh, the two that are reviewing is one of the, the guys that work with the fire department? Did you get seven, did you get an IT team?
Yes, one of the guys that's on the building.
Oh, you put it in, okay.
One of the guys that's on the building committee, lives over on Chase Street, is he one of them?
He's one of the reviewers. The other gentleman is, uh, just from the school. The third, we never got the information. Is he not interested or?
Uh, here's, I, I could have, you have them electronically? Do you have them?
Cindy, Cindy does.
In the email or whatever?
Cindy has it.
A cert verified would be good.
Yeah, she, if she sent it to me, I can send it to, uh, my captain's IT guy from Newbury.
The other guy doesn't want to?
No.
We never got his information.
Just let me have a cert guy that's reputable.
Okay, or your captain?
Yeah, that's this guy.
Oh, okay.
I have his email.
Okay, all right, yeah. If you send it to Cindy?
Yeah, I got it.
We have everything electronic?
Yeah.
We can just ship it to him?
Cool.
So I'm gonna have to send all the?
Uh, yeah, I gotta stop my SC tomorrow and sign some stuff, so. Ladies general, thank you.
Okay.
Open to quick meeting. Say yes.
Yes.
Okay, mosquito and tick control contract.
Well, Kevin's not here, did he mention anything to you? I know he reached out.
I'm not gonna sign that until we talk about this.
To the references.
Okay. That's why, yeah, Kevin was checking references on that.
All the last ones, the people that she was able to reach were good, there was a couple that couldn't reach. And I did send him a change number that I got from the company, and I didn't hear from him again, so. When we can talk with Kevin, we can.
Uh, let's just revisit that at the end of the meeting, we'll call him. Consulting services agreement.
Did we send that out to our attorney?
What? That's an order from Mr. Greenwood.
Well, I, I thought we were sending all our contracts out to our attorneys.
No, I didn't think so. I didn't do that, anything of that, that was not, you didn't ask me to do that.
No, no, I, I know we didn't, but I thought it was a matter of practice, we were sending.
I thought this was a renewal, I thought this was a project.
We didn't, we didn't renew it last year.
Well, you didn't sign it for twenty, twenty, because he never gave us, but I assume it's the same.
And even the sentiment of the board was, why are we signing a contract for twenty twenty at the end of twenty twenty?
This for now is for two years, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
My recommendation, any employment contract should go out twenty twenty.
I second that recommendation.
Well, we'd already decided any contract should go out.
But I thought so, yeah. But I think the reason this one didn't is because it was only for twenty twenty. And we were like, why are we signing contracts for twenty twenty?
Well, I think we set a precedence.
Oh, you're talking about Glenn?
We sent two other contracts out, right, Jess?
They, the attorney doesn't have it yet. I contacted Liz Bailey last week. She was out of the office, talked with her assistant, sent her an email, which I copied both Phil and Susan because they need to make sure there's not a conflict of interest. I had hoped to hear from her today, I didn't, but I will definitely follow up tomorrow.
But I think where we're sending those two out, we should certainly send any other contract out for reference.
I, I think given the recent narrow victory we got in the waste management dispute, what would be in order in the town's best interest is to have every contract with you by our attorney. Because, you know, these little things they slip in about mediation, and I'm not saying that has anything to do with this contract, but I think we need to get eyes on there, and for an hour of the attorney's time, it can save us a lot of money, and I agree.
Do you want to go to the same one you said?
Well, we haven't said anything yet until we can confirm that there's no conflict of interest represented in town with its employment contracts.
Okay.
So I will call tomorrow and verify that we're, it's a go, and then I will give you the two that I have. I will always call you, Susan, and, and Liz Chairman, because you know what I and what else the board is doing with attorneys, so. If they say if you go, then we'll settle it, we'll have a CC to, we'll have those two contracts. In which case, I'll tell them there'll be a third one coming, then we can get an electronic file and if we go, or we can send it directly. I'd like to sort of say this, in terms of lawyers, I wanna know that you, my bosses know what I'm doing, just the way it is.
Even people.
Yeah, I've been in maybe some low even than, or sometimes. I've seen my red with you.
Yeah, I, I just, especially anything that involves money at any length of time, we, we just, we need to cover ourselves on this.
Man, I, I like him to look at ending the contract as much as going into it. You know, how we can end it, what the liability is in ending it, if it's common active, that type of stuff.
Well, and, and if they are our town council, as he, as Sumner is, the first thing he brought up in, in that other one that I mentioned was, why are we signing this without me looking at it? And, you know, that was a big one, but I think even the small ones need to.
This one was awkward all the way around because he gives us a contract after you didn't have to pay, it just
Okay, new business, uh, we need to
Glenn, I'm here.
Oh, hi.
Okay, go ahead.
Did you still wanna? Well, but we're not looking at Sumner either, but I just
So if we were not, I, I guess I would ask, and I don't know if we should do this in public, where it's an employment issue, unless Glenn chooses to speak about it now. So why did we not execute the contract if someone looked at it? That's my question. So I, I guess, Glenn, I'm asking, if we sent that out to someone last year, why did we not execute that contract?
The only difference this, that I've seen this year is that it's a two-year, because it's really retroactive for one year. So is that doing a difference, Glenn?
So let's do this. Can you get that to tomorrow morning?
December.
And maybe to do the encumbrance?
So you're gonna send it to Sumner, is that?
You are, you are gonna send it to Sumner tomorrow morning.
So Glenn, I would send it to Sumner in the morning.
If it comes, tell Sumner we want a twenty-four hour turnaround.
Okay, if we can get it back, um, the selectmen are meeting for
We won't sign it to next Monday anyway.
We can, we, we wait. We might be meeting Thursday.
We are meeting Thursday.
There you go.
Well, unless we have nothing to cover, we'll come with your first.
They had, they had a few things here.
I don't do anything anyways, so.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so that's, so we get that rolling and then still get that done this week.
All right, um, so we got a 79 application from?
Timber, Mr. Timber.
There's a technical name for their company.
Timber Brothers.
Timber Brothers.
Top, top, top. Here.
So essentially, we need to set up a hearing date on this, correct, sir?
Yes.
That's the only action we need to take this evening, right?
I believe so.
Okay. So I would say not next Monday, but the following?
Okay.
Anybody have any issue with that?
Well, we were gonna set up a committee, that's what we decided we were gonna do, review these before it came to the selectman.
You mean after we already negotiated numbers and everything like that?
We were just gonna make, the committee was gonna make sure it was thorough and complete, filled out right, and then send it to the selectman, so it wasn't wasted in the selectman's back review if it was missing information. Now, he's done several of these, and I'm sure he knows what he can do.
And you've talked to him and kind of agreed to some things as well.
Okay.
Not officially, obviously, but tentative.
There were tentative negotiations, nothing has been agreed on.
That's right, no, thank you.
Agreed on preliminary numbers that have.
Um, you know, what, do you want, we could send it to the Heritage Commission, that's who the group is, right? Debbie Powers and the.
Well, what it was gonna be was a planning board, a heritage, um, an HDC, a selectman.
An individual representative, we should improve. Because we can do this electronically.
I don't know if we need to over this one.
I'm not sure we need to.
We need to set that up in the future.
Well, I think there's value to it, if you're gonna have a standing board to handle these issues, it should, it should be handled the same way every time, and you're absolutely correct, we did agree to do that, and I'm fully in favor of that likewise.
All right, I'll put, let's handle this one, we'll put the committee on the to-do list for, set it up. I mean, we've already, like I say, we've already negotiated this one quite a bit and everything else.
Right, but I think.
There may be other things in there that we're not familiar with, that the Heritage Committee people or planning board might want to.
All right.
So to be sent out to those.
Why don't we talk about it Thursday or Monday, about call those people who we talked about?
And they could do electronically, give their input, and then we have a summary, they can just.
Okay.
I didn't say anything.
You're gonna talk to the planning, heritage, and picture?
Heritage, conservation. Planning and the select.
Okay. Uh, we've got some job descriptions for the code enforcement.
Let's, let's talk about the salary for me, because this is in here. We talked about a lot of different things, but I just ran the numbers, and this is in here, 20 hours a week for $25 an hour. Is what it's, Article 11 is roughly. And we talked about 12 hours, we talked about 40 hours.
I thought the intent was to have them full-time.
Huh?
I thought the intent was to have them full-time.
Well, it was, but, you know, when we start talking about it, and I start talking about it, Cindy has said, what are we doing? And, you know, total 40-hour thing. So I'm just bringing it up for conversation, that we really want to go for a 40-hour person when we're going for Rich's person, to go for two. I know a lot of people feel that we, they're supporting this because of possibility of the warehouse, stormwater management, now Rich is saying he's gonna handle stormwater management with his person.
Well, I think that needs to be handled, but there is gonna have to be someone who physically goes out and verifies that these, and I don't think that's gonna be Rich's person.
You think they're just gonna do the paperwork?
There'll probably be the labor side of this, and, and this will be the, the business end of it.
I mean, if, if you look at the call sheet, Article 11, it's only three cents at 20 hours. So if we go 40 hours, we're gonna probably run that to eight or something by the time you add eight or nine cents, by the time you add benefits. Or, I mean, I'm asking, I'm not suggesting.
We have to have someone at least, at least for 25 hours a week, at least, because the need is there now. Regardless of what happens on, on 125, that, that's just on top of.
Oh, no, I mean.
Just the issues we have going on.
We know.
Three other situations that are amiss.
So for the benefit of the viewing public, we're discussing a code enforcement officer position for the town of Kinston. And the reason for this is because the planning board will do a second plane review with a proposed business and... Or homeowner, or development, or subdivision, or what have they, whatever comes before the planning board. And as of right now, there is no dedicated person who follows up on those things, um, to ensure compliance. There's an agreement between business owners and applicants for these things, and a lot of these things are not followed up. So on top of that, there's been other things that have come up, this stormwater management, um...
General complaints.
General complaints, people who call in because someone has 15 cars on an illegal junkyard in their neighbor's yard.
Cause they're cutting trees.
Cutting trees down, all these things that the board of selectmen is dealing with right now, and you have five volunteers who are making, you know, visits up to these places with limited knowledge about what's going on, and... So this is not meant to go and boss people for having the wrong color on their shutters or something like that. This is to enforce existing agreements and existing regulations within the town that the townspeople have voted upon. Um, and that's what we're trying to establish here, is how this person will be employed with the town and compensation. So that's just for everybody's knowledge on that. Uh, I do think personally to Rich's point, there's a price point that you get, you get what you pay for. And I think in a part-time scenario, you're not gonna get someone who's dedicated to this job. I've told this story numerous times, where Rich St. Larran started at the south end of 125, and we had him get two miles into town before I ever gave a sheet of notebook paper about the violation. And that was just on 125, and you're on a single side road or anything like that. I mean, this needs to be a full-time position. There is enough work here, and then the intent at the time was, the building inspector, when he's ready to retire, this person would take over that role as well. But this would allow them the time to get their feet on their own, catch up on the backlog of violations that we have, and just kind of get some policies and procedures in place before they take over the, the additional.
I really appreciate it, I mean, I'm torn between the need for the position and getting at least half-time if nothing else. But can I suggest something else? Can we go for the full-time, at least through the deliberative session? And if we get a lot of pushback at the deliberative session, and we decide then whether to reduce it to part-time?
I think it's a failure on our part, we can't convince people why this is necessary. That there is a glaring hole in the enforcement side of this town.
Huge, very huge.
That's great for people who are scoundrels and want to get away with things, but it's not great for the town people. So don't have to make comments out there. I just, you know, there are people who thrive on the fact that we don't have any way to follow up on these things, they, they...
They take it forward.
We're an easy mark right now, and there is, you know.
A lot of people are just basically challenging the town because they think there is no enforcement.
Yeah.
There is no, relatively speaking.
And, and this results in a lot of lawsuits for the town, because these things get, you'll get away with them for a certain amount of time, and then they say that they think they're grandfathering because of that. And it's just, I, I think we're either doing this or we're not, and that's my take on it.
I'd like to do it, I'd like to do it.
So how many hours, 40?
At least 35.
How many?
35, that's seven hours a day. I don't think, I mean, who's putting?
I mean, there's, there's a couple of ways of looking at it, we could do, what's Robert now, 20?
Week?
Yeah.
One of them.
So, so more than likely, we can't roll the two in together anyway.
No.
So we'd have to do some modifying to do that.
I, I think just that position alone, Robert is getting more than his hours in it, and...
Right.
So... I, 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 just the policies and the procedures that need to be established by this person to start, and then...
But you have nothing to replace.
And the other side, that's a good enforcement agent, or officer is gonna take a lot of pressure off of Robert, the electoral inspector.
And the selectman.
And the select.
Especially.
So.
There is not the time to have volunteers going out and following up these things, it is.
So we're going 40 hours at $25 an hour?
Yeah.
And if we just use Cindy's, uh...
52 plus benefits.
What is it?
52 plus benefits.
Do you have that sheet that tells what, I mean, I can get Cindy to fill it in tomorrow.
Set 52?
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden, it's the same.
Okay. So that was on the, uh...
And I will start pushing this planning board meetings and...
But this is also a salary position, so it's not 40 hours, it's...
Right.
You do what the job requires.
Right.
Just as much as the fire chief, the road agent, and the police chief, and, um, that person's gonna put in a lot more than 40 hours, I would say.
In the beginning, for sure.
Yeah. Till they get things dialed in, um...
So if we take the 52, it's, you're gonna only have nine months, right?
Yeah, I can get Cindy to fill in the amount, and then we'll vote on it next week.
What's the rate?
So I, I'm gonna jump back here to the committee liaison report for me. We had a snowstorm on the day, we were supposed to have the inspectors' meeting, and then it was Christmas Eve last week, so we have an inspectors' meeting, the report I want to bring before the board of selectmen, I want to bring to the inspectors first, to just bounce off of them and get some, um, input from them before it's submitted to this board. But I think a lot of that will outline a lot of, just the task list for this position to be engaged upon. So I, I think this is a good start, but I would like to bring what I've kind of brought together to the inspectors, and, and then kind of bring that in as far as more minutes on this thing.
I mean, they're gonna have to work closer with him than anybody else.
That's right.
Yeah, and, and, yeah.
Or her.
Said person. So.
So for a placeholder right now, you're, it's full-time, we're an Article 4, full-time position.
Correct.
All right, uh, anything more on that? All right, uh, the balance we already discussed. Susan will be following up a little some of that.
Yes.
Committee leaders on the boards.
I had, as I said, I spoke with Liz's office with the contracts. Rich pretty much outlined what he had going with it today, um, I spoke with Cindy, with Tammy, excuse me, um... Nothing really new going on over there either, so all is quiet, left relatively speaking for today, I should say. It's never quiet for a while.
Got any questions?
No, we'll continue the hearings on that serious logistic building. That's continued later in the month. Probably have an average of about 80 people zooming on that.
It's incredible how well that works.
Pretty, pretty good source to get out some information if we need to. A lot of misinformation being spread, I'll say that publicly, that it's definitely not confirmed that it's Amazon, which everybody says it is, and they're printing information like it is. You know, selectmen, as Phil said last meeting, have no say in this, that it's a planning board issue at this point.
It's too bad that people jump to conclusions about things they don't know about, and if, you know, there's some opposition, of course, and the neighbors always oppose, but it's, are they opposed because they think it might be Amazon? I don't think it's Amazon.
I'm like 90% sure it's not Amazon.
Yeah, and so it's, so the.
But I'm speculating too.
It's a warehouse on 125 Metting North.
Well.
But anyways.
Again, it has nothing to do with the selectmen at this time, so. But if you do care about it, and you want what happens in the planning board process to be enforced, vote for the code enforcement officer, Warren Article.
And, and to continue that, if you care about this article, go on to the Zoom meeting, even if you're for, we need to hear both sides of it, we're hearing the no's, we need to hear the yeses too.
That's true.
I mean, it has been voted to use that property for this type of establishment, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Um... Got the draft budget there, you don't need to take any action on that.
Um, I don't think so, I just wanted to make sure you had that all in front of you. Budget committee meets on Wednesday, if you have anything more for them, I'm sure. What that would be, I just want, it's all about to be finished up soon, so.
Okay. Um, so the encumbrances, Thursday at 10 o'clock, work for everybody.
Tim?
Yeah, good.
Yep.
That's in person?
Yeah.
Why, you Zooming on that?
Oh, good.
Everybody got a problem with that?
You Zooming? No.
Turn to you. What's the Zoom?
Rich, did you hear that, you wanna Zoom Thursday, Rich?
Hmm?
Did you get it? Do, do you, can you Zoom on Thursday at 10, is that, will that work for you? Okay.
Okay, good.
Okay, initially, we have received $7,306.29 from the CARES Act, because the government cares. So we need to accept that as unanticipated revenue, so can I get a motion as such?
So. Can I have a second?
Sorry.
A motion and a second, further discussion. Hearing none, we'll follow up please.
Masio?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Coach?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, second public comment. Anyone? Hearing none. Received the letter regarding the 125 project we just discussed, as discussed, the selectmen have no bearing whatsoever on that, and we don't read letters from our town residents.
It's too soon to tell.
What does that have to do with anything?
Not our issue at the time.
It's personal opinions of this board, and it doesn't come into play if the board is, it's up to the planning board, it's their role.
The select board can.
You gonna identify yourself? Under the meeting. If you have a specific question for these selectmen, drop it to the planning board, you can ask it now if you'd like.
Could you hear that?
So I don't know how you know how I feel, I haven't heard all the facts yet, I know they're gonna make some changes to plans, I haven't... I haven't heard all the facts yet. I know they're going to make some changes to plans, I haven't seen those. I think it's still too early to make a decision.
I can go on the record and, and say that I'm waiting for some more traffic.
Changing plans and coming back to us with better information, next, next meeting. They heard what people had to say the last meeting, and said they were going to make some alterations to improve. Uh.
Any amended plans go on the website?
The plans will be submitted. They have to be like 10 days before, so, so I would check with Ellen for the date on when those have to be in.
Is there anyone else for a public comment? Nope, I guess not, okay. If someone, she popped up, she thought we were already talking about it on the agenda.
Okay, we got some abatement requests?
Um, just the one, I believe. Oh, there's two. It should be in that orange five, somewhere by Don.
Got some yellow paper. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, so time was, if you have it. Um. And then engineer report from Dennis. Everybody look at this?
Yeah, I see.
All right.
We have a motion in the minutes.
I would love a motion on the minutes.
We will read out the minutes of the December 14th meeting, both public and non-public.
Okay, you got a motion and a second, further discussion. Hearing none, roll call votes please.
Alasio?
Yep.
Griggs?
Yes.
Coons?
Yes.
And Wilson.
Yes.
All right. Any non-public items?
Yes.
Okay. Under what?
Uh, legal.
Okay.
Got a motion in the wing for legal?
Yes. Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
We need roll call for that.
Okay, that will conclude the televised portion of this evening's meeting. Thank you for joining us.
I think that ridiculous football game.